Good afternoon, all. I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. The Administrative, Informal, and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 4:06 PM on this ninth day of November 2021 pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergencies statewide requirement to wear masks in K-12 schools issued August 12th of 2021 and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's Guidance for K-12 Schools and the School Board's 2122 reopening plan adopted August 10th of this year. It is determined that physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. There'll be limited public seating made available on a first-come, first-served basis beginning shortly before this session of the school board meeting. Members of the public will be able to observe this school board workshop through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It is our protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session, school board meeting. At 5:30, the board will conclude its this session of the meeting unless the school board votes to continue until 5:45, but we will conclude no later than then to allow the board and school administration to prepare for the formal session of the school board meeting at 6 o'clock. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Presently in the school board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Owens, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Weems, Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Felton.
Thank you. We welcome all of those joining us today in person and our viewing public. With that, we will begin with school board administrative matters and reports. Any of my colleagues have anything to report? All right, hearing none, we will proceed with our first workshop presentation of the afternoon, our school board legislative agenda for 2022 General Assembly Session. And we invite our Legislative Committee Chair to begin.
Good evening, and I would thank you, Madam Chair. And at this time, we would have Mr. Joel Anderson here to present to you our recommendations for legislative agenda for 2022.
Welcome, sir.
I think that's right, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you. It's good to be back with you again. I, as always about this time of the year, coming to talk about our General Assembly Legislative Agenda for the 2022 Session, which is just around the corner, and obviously, we are starting to get to work on that right away, given that the elections are now settled and we sort of are getting a little clearer direction of what session is going to look like, at least a little bit at this time. So, I'm going to run through this pretty quickly. I think a lot of these items are things that we've been talking about before, issues that have been priorities for us over a number of years. There are a few things that are not necessarily new, but I think are kind of drilling down on things that we think are going to be priorities for the school division this upcoming General Assembly Session. So, the primary focus, again, as it has been for years, is really going to be on budget and funding. That's where much of our effort and time is spent, is ensuring that we are getting sufficient funds out of Richmond. That's not going to be any different this year. You recall, last year, we talked about the average daily membership. You know, there were some certainly challenges and fluctuations with our average daily membership. While we've seen some of that, I think, level out a little bit. Lots of school divisions, not just Virginia Beach, continue to see drops in ADM. And I'm going to bounce around here a little bit because somehow, this is also tied in a little bit with the re-benchmarking. So, just level set real fast, every other year when we set a new biennial budget, they recalculate the cost of providing public education in Virginia. And so, this called re-benchmarking. The Department of Education comes up with the amount of funds that the state has to spend to continue funding public education. Those numbers came out just a couple of weeks ago, and the total number for re-benchmarking for the next biennial is about $300 million, which is actually shockingly less than what it has been in years past. What is weird about this year, and this is why I'm coming back to ADM real fast, is a lot of those funds are, that calculation is based upon 2020, and 2020 was such an odd year, and so, they had to make some adjustments in how they sort of calculated things, just because it was a weird year to have a baseline. And so, the ADM is going to be a component of re-benchmarking, I think, this year. There's going to be a lot of discussions about how do you calculate transportation costs? How do you calculate substitute teachers? Things where schools didn't spend the money on that they normally would have. And so, that's going to be a bit of a discussion for both the ADM issue as well as the re-benchmarking issue, only because of just, you know, we're still kind of coming out of, you know, these anomalies from a funding standpoint from COVID. So, those are two things. Teacher salary increase, including also recruitment and retention. This has been our legislative agenda for a couple of years. Nothing new on this front. What is new, and what is, I want to point your attention to also, is that we are going to be specifically seeking, and it's unclear whether we're going to be going through legislation, budget amendments, we've been in talks about that, but looking at that time period when a state employee leaves the state, which is currently 12 months before they could come back to be a teacher. So, given that we are facing significant teacher shortages, we're looking at that 12-month kind of cool-off period, maybe reducing that to six months, and that is really all about how do we look at the teacher pipeline? How do we get more teachers into school divisions? One of the, there's, and you might recall, we've talked about this with school security officers over the years, there's two little issues with that. One is with the IRS. They require a bona fide break in employment before they can start doing this. And then, the second one is VRS, when they think about their calculations and long-term calculations for making sure that the fund is whole, that they are meeting their benchmarks. They don't want to push people into early retirement through a number of changes. So, those are things that we'll have to work through, but we think that there's a crisis point on this. We think we need to really work on getting more teachers in the pipeline, and this is one of those aids to do that. Support cap. You might recall that we made a little bit of progress on this issue last year. Still a priority. Support cap has been in place, I think, since 2009. We will continue to push on the support cap. We'll continue to work with our elected officials to try to continue to close that gap. As you know, it is a significant dollar amount from the state's perspective, which is why we've been sort of chipping away at it the last year. We hope to continue to chip away at it. We've also talked specifically about some of those behavioral and mental health support positions. So, assuming that the state can't fully fund those support positions, let's think about some of those really specific places where we might need some additional support, particularly coming out of the pandemic. And as we have students, you know, back in the classroom, we're kind of dealing with more and more of those issues. Special education has also been a big issue for us last couple of years. You might recall, two years ago, we worked on some legislation dealing around clarifying some special education process that went to a work group. Unfortunately, not a whole lot came out of that, but we are continuing to work on the special ed front as it relates to both the process, as it relates to funding, and those types of things. There was a lot of legislation last year dealing with special education. Some of that did help us, but we expect that to be, continue to be, an issue moving forward because, you know, lots of school divisions struggle with special education. And the last piece on the funding budget side is dedicated funding for capital. You know, the state has not really fully funded, it hasn't funded capital in any meaningful way in years and years and years. There continues to be a push for it. This is, pushes primarily done by rural and urban school divisions. We would love to see the state continue to chip in in a meaningful way on capital. There is some discussion, continue to be some discussion about maybe this would be the year we might see some significant capital. Again, the problem with this tends to be like the support cap. It requires a lot of money to really move the needle on that. But those are the things that, from a budget standpoint, that are going to be our main priorities on that. In terms of other legislative issues, we've been talking about school bus driver shortage, I think, for a long, last several months now, it feels like much longer than that. And we've also been working with a number of policymakers on some specific school bus driver shortage ideas. So, we'll hopefully, we'll see some of those come to fruition this General Assembly Session. Those tend to be around, you know, maybe some state dollars for training to get, again, more individuals in the pipeline to become school bus drivers. It might be around streamlining the process with DMV. There's some holdups with DMV, so how can we work better with DMV to just get people through again? Unfortunately, a lot of the school bus driver regulations, requirements, come from the feds, and so, what we also want to do is work with our local elected officials to, in their capacity, put some pressure on our friends north of the Tomic and see if we can also get some relief from that perspective. But I think there is a few things that the state can do that will help with us that. So, that is also part of our legislative package, and that is something new and unique from, than in years past. Unfunded mandates. We talk about this every single year. We continue to fight off unfunded mandates. We've also been working on a coalition with some other school divisions, specifically around some of the unfunded mandates around healthcare in particular, and we've seen a number of pieces of legislation pass over the last several years from EpiPens, concussion management, inhalers, things like that. And so, what we are looking and specifically asking for is to have the General Assembly at least set up a way to vet these things. So many times, they come before committee in education. You don't necessarily have the healthcare experts sitting around the room. They pass it because it seems and sounds like a great idea, and sometimes they are, but they need to at least get vetted through another process. So, we're hoping to, you know, work on having a designated committee or group to look at some of these unfunded mandate from at least a healthcare standpoint. So, we will be actively pursuing that. And continued assessment reform. You might recall this past General Assembly Session, we made a little bit of progress on growth assessments. So, that's something we had been working on. I think we will continue to see some assessment reform over the next couple of years. There's a number of legislators who are interested in that, and so, we'll continue to support them in that work as that comes up. Nothing new on that. And then, the final piece on our legislative agenda is charter schools. This has been our agenda for the last several years. You know, we, our position has been, you know, making sure that the local school boards have control of the schools in their district. So, you know, as you've probably heard, that has been a part of the campaign, so we'll see if we see legislation on that this year or not, but I expect that will at least be a topic of discussion sometime in the next couple of years. So, like I said, a lot of things that you've seen before. Happy to answer any questions or go into detail on any of these. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd first like to offer the opportunity to our Legislative Committee members, if they care to comment or ask first before we open it up to questions.
As Chair, I would refrain, and any of my committee members have anything to say at this time, which is Ms. Manning's on that as well, and Ms. Riggs, if they have anything to say to the agenda.
Yes. Well, I love the bus driver item. We talked a lot about that in committee, and thanks to Dr. Robertson and Joel for input in that. One thing that I learned is that our driver, we lose drivers to commercial trucking businesses because they get certified and then they move on to that. So, one discussion we had is advocating at the federal level to get a different licensure for just bus drivers so that we can perhaps retain and recruit more drivers, to make it easier and also to make the DMV process a lot easier. So, that, for me, that's like one of my top priorities out of this whole legislative agenda. I'm not sure why the ADM is back in there because when we were in committee, we decided that that would be pulled out, and it's now back in there. It's not something that I support. I don't think it's fair to ask the taxpayers to pay for students who've disenrolled now that we are fully open. So, I don't know how that ended up back in there when we decided in committee that it wasn't going to be on it.
Based upon a couple of conversations we had with other school divisions and given the weird nature of the re-benchmarking process this year because of how the formulas are going to be based, that's how we, it was discussed to put it back in. And it was just, it was a, I think we are continuing to deal with these sort of anomalies from the federal dollars, from the state stimulus dollars, the special session, and things like that. And the intent was to just making sure that we are not losing a disproportionate amount of funding through some of these anomalies.
Well, but we still have the re-benchmarking on there. So, that's just not something that I can support. And as I mentioned in Legislative Committee as well, I can't support the charter school issue with being against charter schools unless they're controlled by the local school boards. I've said this before. If we have failing schools in, you know, failing school boards, failing schools in the state, then we're telling other districts that, you know, other districts that they can't have charter schools and that parents, families can't have an option, and that's not something that I can support. And one thing, something else that I brought up in our committee is, you know, and this was before the election, so it's even changed a little bit more now. We have, we have new leadership in the executive branch and our House of Delegates. How awesome would it be if we had 11 board members agreeing to a legislative agenda? How powerful that would be to take to Richmond to say, you know, a board that never agrees on anything, if we can agree on a legislative agenda to take to Richmond? And there are only two items up there that I disagree with. And if we were able to pull those off and agree on those other really important items, I think we could really get some great things done. So, that's something that I brought up in committee, and I'd like to throw out to my colleagues on the board as well. Thank you.
Well, staying consistent with the meeting that we had, I believe that we did go into deep conversation concerning the ADM. And one of the reasons why we wanted it to be held harmless is because of the situation that COVID has now placed us in because influx of how our students are moving around and the trends of it. We did have a great exodus of students to enroll in private schools, but we're looking at that influx coming back into our public schools as well. And I think we did come on some sort of compromise that holding us harmless until that was settled would be the place that we could stand on and agree to. Listening to my colleague concerning charter schools, I rest on the law that not only do we represent those parents that want to have that option, but I'm also looking at the parents that really relish the idea of public schools. And public schools, from understanding from the great meeting I had last night, the community meeting, public schools will educate any eligible individuals, and that is not always the case with charter schools. So, I'm holding firm to that until we see how, as Mrs. Manning has said, how this new administrative is going to go. Because I think that this school board, this city, this Virginia Beach City Public School has done a great deal with their students. I do have concerns for other states and other divisions, it's how they're leaning into it, because I talked with a lot of chairs as well. But I think we have done a great service to our community. And, and as I stated in our community meeting, specifically than I had last night, that we should have conversation with our delegates, our congressmen, if we want to see better things going on in the state with other students as well, other schools. It is concerning when I see other schools and other divisions that talk about not having the resources that they need and being inundated by unmandated mandated or unfunded. This is what their challenges are in other divisions. But I think that we need to hold fast to what we have and be as an example, a beacon on the light, is how we are doing and going through our process and making things better, and be a rallying call for those other divisions, talking with other delegates concerned of that as well. I'll pull back in, Ms. Riggs at this time.
I'm concerned, I love the bus thing too, and thank you, Mrs. Manning, because she's the one that really, you know, pushed for that during our meeting. So, I think that was fantastic. It's something that we all really needing, and I think we need to push on the federal level with that as well. And the ADM, I think we need to see what's happening because of COVID, and I agree with it, staying in there or being put back in. And as far as charter schools, I understand what you're saying, to send it to, you know, the state and everybody in Virginia Beach supporting it by taking it off, but I don't feel we need to be taking that off. I think it's still something, and even more so now with the elections. I think it's something that we really need to keep our eye on, and I agree with everything. I'm not going to reiterate everything that Mrs. Felton said, but I am right there with you. So, that's my feeling with charter schools.
Okay, now we have Mrs. Hughes, then Mrs. Melnick, and Mrs. Weems.
So, I do think localities should have the option of having charter schools that are not run by their school boards. There are areas with failing schools, and that actually dooms children, and the only other choice they would have would be to go to another school that's run by the same people if they're in a failing school system. So, I feel like that takes away their options and opportunities for their parents to choose something. But I'm also, with this ADM, I guess I'm trying to understand why a committee agreed to take it out, and then, who is "we" that decided to put it back in? What's the point of having a committee if it doesn't say what the committee decided on?
I'm not sure the entire process. I know that when the draft that was sent around, I don't know if this helps or not. If I can make maybe a slight suggestion that maybe would help is, the re-benchmarking numbers currently that we see out there, the $300 million, is based upon those ADM dollars that were held harmless. And so, we think about re-benchmarking fully funded as of right now, it actually includes sort of some of the things that they did last year. Because as I mentioned, last year was such a weird kind of anomaly from a state funding perspective, and so, they weren't really sure how to calculate re-benchmarking going forward because of the base years were off. And so, it's really, I think, in many respects, rolled into that fully funding of the re-benchmarking this year than it may have been in the years past. And so, maybe it makes sense to sort of combine those into a single point, but I defer to, you know, you all have the best to address that.
Well, that wasn't my question at all. I tend to agree that the taxpayers should not be paying for students that are not here, but if you have a committee that said, "We're not going to have it on there," and then it shows up and it's on there, who decided to put it back on there?
I would like to address that, Mrs. Hughes. If you're speaking to the Legislative Committee, the "we," the Legislative Committee, to my knowledge, and I can go ahead and pull up the notes, we never determined that we would pull it out. I don't remember that. So, we need to go back and get those notes because what we did talk about was making sure that we were held harmless so that we could see how the numbers are rolled over. Now, we did talk a long, essentially, on charter schools and pulling that out. And I said to Mrs. Manning, I said, "Well, let me talk with other board members and see how they feel about it before I suggest it in any way." But never did we, or I remember saying we were going to pull the ADM out because we wanted to be held harmless to that. And I don't know if Secretary was there and that can pull it up because we stated that we want to make sure that we work our way through that particular harmlessness.
And I was surprised when Mrs. Manning said that because I don't remember it either. I thought we were continuing with the holding harmless. So, maybe you have something, but I did not.
So, and I even got an email after the meeting on Wednesday, November 3rd, from Mr. Sutton. Please see the 2022 Legislative Agenda. It has the ADM "hold harmless" language placed back in per request of the Chair. So, placed back in means that it had been taken out. So, that was on November 3rd, which was after our meeting.
Well, I guess I'm also trying to understand why anybody would think the taxpayers should be paying for students that aren't here. That doesn't make any sense at all.
Just to eliminate a lot of the conversation, I know we got to go on. I would ask if Ms. Pace could speak to the ADM and make it more digestible so we could understand exactly what the ADM is and how we move through this process.
So, the ADM is, we do a 9:30 fall membership, and then, to do our final budget, they do a 3:31 ADM, and that's usually what our basic aid is finally calculated on. So, I know on the re-benchmarking, so that's important for the funding for the school division. Right now, what I understand on the re-benchmarking is that the state itself has made a decision to include the no-loss funding in the state's budget, is not being distributed to the schools. That's a little unusual. So, part of that, it might be the reason why. There are some school districts that have reached pre-pandemic ADM numbers, and there's some that have not. There's about 45,000 students across the state that have been lost, and so, the state did not want to come back and try to scramble for that money at the end of the year, and so, that decision was made as part of the re-benchmarking process. I don't know if I can give you a philosophy of why some people would feel that the taxpayers should not pay for it, and why some think that there's still a COVID-related overhang that's causing some districts still not to reach their pre-pandemic ADM levels. I don't know if that's helpful, but...
Because I'm assuming that the ADM is what has been calculated, what it costs to educate per child, and if it costs, you know, however much for this many students, and we only have this many...
It is a component, but there are some other things that go along into that re-benchmarking process. There's three different components, and I didn't bring a list with me, but that go along with what's filed by each school division on their annual school report. So, it has to do with costs, that it costs a division. So, even though we may have lower ADM, we still have costs, and they probably have increased. And so, there are three components that come strictly out of what school divisions have filed. And then, there is some other components that are not from what a school division files as a reporting requirement.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick, and then Mrs. Weems.
I think, as a former member of the Legislative Committee, I mean, we've had these same talks for years, the talks about unfunded mandates, about charter schools, about vouchers. And I think the most important thing to remember when you're on this Legislative Committee, that while you're thinking broad, you also need to narrow your thoughts and remember for whom you represent, and that is the City of Virginia Beach. And I ask that you put some real thought into your words when you start using failing schools and Virginia Beach in the same sentence, because...
I did not reference Virginia Beach when I said failing schools. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was not talking, the word failing schools come up a lot, and Virginia Beach is not a failing school system. It is one of the best school systems in the state. And it is, and we are recognized everywhere we go. And I ask people to be cognizant of that because we tend to send a message to the community that, that we're not doing what we're supposed to do and that we're failing, and that is simply not true. The, Mr. Andrews and I had a conversation recently about charter schools and what we'll have to, you know, what the process is, and it's important for school boards to be able to maintain control of the charter school piece. This is a, this is a great legislative agenda that I think everybody can get behind, and I ask that it not be political. I mean, these are kids that we're making decisions for, and we're trying to do right by every child every day, and I think we do a pretty darn good job with that, even when there are blips on the radar every once in a while. But it's a fabulous legislative agenda and one that I'll be happy to get behind.
Mrs. Weems?
Thank you. Perhaps to avoid future confusion, if we could have actual committee votes, and those would be inserted into the minutes, and any change of that could be made by an additional committee meeting or amendments in front of the whole board, but, so that we could maybe not have any confusion in the future. But Mr. Andrews, so what is our, can you refresh my memory? It's been a while since I've been on the Legislative Committee, that I chaired it for many years, but I've kind of forgotten. What's the timeline as far as you getting this to where it needs to go?
Generally, we adopt our legislative agenda sometime... Uh, generally, we adopt our legislative agenda sometime before Thanksgiving-ish. Um, we will then send it out to our delegation. We'll have meetings with our delegation. We've done it a number of different ways over the year. Sometimes we'll do, as you might recall, a breakfast with everyone. Um, sometimes from a scheduling standpoint that just doesn't work and we'll go and have individual meetings with legislators. It just kind of depends on the year. Uh, session this year, let me get out my phone real quick, I believe begins on January twelfth, I think it is, if my memory serves me correctly. And it's a sixty-day session, so it'll be ending, you know, roughly middle of, middle of March this year. So we try to get at least in the front of everyone a month, six weeks in advance. Now, some of these, these items, um, you know, we've already had, started to have just some preliminary conversations on certainly the school bus um driver issue shortage, you know, things like that. We've already begun some because we don't want to wait too long on some of these issues um as we get much closer to session, but that's, that's generally the process.
And when will the more detailed information come to us?
Um.
Do you know, or Ms. Felton?
Concerning.
Like the, the, all these recommendations. Like, and I know they've had a lot of conversations on the bus drivers, but some things, you know, when, when will all that come to us? Or is this it? And then we vote on it and then you send it?
It will be sent to you after this meeting. It should be, it should have been sent to you prior, but it will be sent to you. We had some legitimates. But uh, what you're asking, you will get this information uh right after this meeting prior, uh, not right after, but this week, we'll be beginning, is what you're asking me.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I think, you know, it, it is, you know, trying to figure out what, what's local and what's not because I mean, like the bus driver shortage, we've already said, we really want to campaign the federal and the state for certain things. So that's not a local. So it, and, and charter schools, the same thing. So you're not supposed to look at other divisions, you know, for charter schools, like some, some divisions, small divisions on the western part of the state. You know, we may think, oh, charter schools would be great, but I, I'm hearing we're not supposed to think that way. But then on the bus issue, we are supposed to think that, that way. So it's kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting thing to kind of look at. So I will be, um, yeah, I'll be looking at this in, in more detail, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And thank you, committee.
And, and to piggyback on that, that colleagues, you, we all have two weeks to weigh this, to ask more questions, to talk with one another. And this, we, we have agenda planning scheduled tomorrow, but it will be, uh, this will be a, an agenda item for the November, the, our second November meeting of the month. And, and I convey my thanks as well to the committee and our staff liaisons.
The only thing I would also add is if anyone has any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to me directly. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, run through any of these that you might want to talk about in more detail and just sort of what we're thinking we're going to see coming in uh January. Obviously, some, some changes from the last couple of years, but certainly not entirely uh uncharted territory for us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can, Canvas pilot and flexible scheduling updates. Uh, and we have Dr. Sharon Shubridge, welcome.
Good evening, good afternoon. Um, I'm filling in, I'm going to pinch hit here a little bit. So good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye. I need my glasses. Um, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, we will provide you with two updates that are very much connected to our strategic plan, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, our pilot program using the Canvas learning management system and our work with investigating flexible scheduling possibilities. As you know, our school division's graduate profile, located in the center of our strategy map in front of you, drives much of our deeper work in the school division and is anchored in our strategic plan, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. By working closely with building leaders and central support staff, we know that in order to meet the goals outlined in Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five, we must consider if we have the right staff and resources to create the necessary student experiences to prepare all students to be future-ready. As such, the two updates you are about to receive are both aligned with our efforts to create the necessary student experiences identified in the blue areas in order to be prepared for future-ready as indicated in our graduate profile. The updates provided today will demonstrate just two ways in which we are planning strategically to provide resources and experiences to prepare our students. I will provide an update on the Canvas learning management system pilot, followed by Mr. Matt Delaney, Senior Executive Director of High Schools, who will provide you with an update on where we are with exploring flexible scheduling options. As we continue to develop future-ready students, evaluating the resources our students interact with is critical. In August, Dr. Rogers shared with the board, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is piloting Canvas, an alternative learning management system to Schoology in seven schools. Three elementary schools, Kingston, Providence, and Red Mill, started the year out using Canvas. Instructional specialists and instructional technology coordinators have been participating in PLCs in these schools, collecting weekly feedback on how the implementation is working. While our four secondary schools were offered the option to begin the Canvas implementation during the second semester, Kempsville High School had fifty-five teachers start at the beginning of the school year. In addition, the entire sixth grade team at Larkspur Middle School began. Dr. Saltoner and I met with all four secondary principals last week to provide guidance to principals regarding teacher choice with the pilot. All four schools have shared their intent to continue moving forward with the pilot while allowing teachers who want to opt out for this year that option and support. As Dr. Rogers shared in the last meeting, all of our instructional resources are reviewed prior to the end of the contract. Because our contract with Schoology expires in August of twenty twenty-two, we started the process to investigate whether the current product still meets our needs or if another product is better aligned. Earlier this year, the VDOE completed the process of identifying a state-supported LMS and they selected Canvas. The Virginia Department of Education is paying for Canvas for the next five years, which will be a significant cost savings for Virginia Beach. Some key considerations for the LMS are curriculum components such as textbooks and assessments. Over ninety percent of the textbook companies we are working with will integrate with Canvas, but not with our current system, limiting our use of the resource. And the assessment platform in our current system is phasing out as they are encouraging their clients to move to their parent company platform. As you can see from our chart, we continue to work in the identify column. As I shared earlier, team members from the Department of Teaching and Learning have been meeting weekly with the PLCs in schools to support their Canvas use as well as collect feedback. Dr. Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, has been meeting with her team weekly to review feedback provided from schools, and some positive adjustments are being made to the way we provide information to teachers. We will continue to encourage feedback from our pilot schools, continually improving the migration throughout the year. And if you recall, one of the points for consideration from our Schoology surveys was the desire for successful grade passback for our secondary teachers. Team members in the Department of Technology have been working with colleagues from other divisions who have successfully implemented grade passback with synergy. We have three teachers from Larkspur and three teachers from Kempsville High School who have agreed to work with DOT during the second nine weeks to create and finalize directions for grade passback to be fully implemented in quarter three for any teacher using Canvas. We are excited as DOT's initial um tests are proving very successful. Based on the request, um, based on a request made to ensure we were hearing from teachers, the next slide is a small compilation of teacher feedback. We received over forty minutes of teacher video to share and we pared it down to four. I didn't think you wanted forty minutes of feedback. Um, but I have to tell you, it was very hard to pare it down. Teacher feedback has been heard and changes and updates have been made to provide the most effective resource. As we worked through last year and based on feedback from teachers this year, what has come to light is the benefit of having a learning management system as a platform for students to interact with the work, to collaborate, to discuss, to share, to demonstrate their learning. Continued steps for us include supporting grade passback, assisting in secondary schools who are piloting in the second semester, creating opportunities for teachers to create instructional materials that can be shared in a sandbox of student resources, and share with non-pilot schools the modified Grow with Canvas, Canvas course for teachers. Continued training for ITS and LMS groups will begin again in the second semester.
Today, we are going to talk about Canvas.
Now, from the teacher perspective, because we work with Schoology, Canvas was an easy transition.
Many of the features found in Schoology are also found on Canvas.
And students find it easier to submit assignments. Also, checking announcements and due dates are again in one place. Students also appreciate receiving feedback attached to their Canvas module assignments.
I am thrilled that we made the transition over to Canvas. There are so many features that are great for teachers and students. One being the calendar in, within Canvas. It makes it very easy for students to stay organized, to see what's coming next. And also, if we didn't end up getting to a certain assignment, I can easily drag and drop and change that due date with a real simple click. Another feature that I love about Canvas is the transparency of the modules. I think that students can see really clearly what is expected of them in the module, uh, learning because they don't have to go into a holder. So I'm, I really love Canvas.
One of the things I really love about Canvas is that it's what I used at undergrad and graduate school, and it's what most of my friends used in their colleges. Um, so it's really transferable for students. The other thing I really like is speed grader. Um, it's easy to go through with my rubrics and grade assignments. Um, I also really like the group, the way that I can group students and have them submit speaking assessments and writing assessments together, and I can grade them both at the same time.
I loved Schoology. I thought it was easy to use. My students had a good time using it. So when Canvas came along, I was like, why change something? But guess what? I love Canvas. Canvas is easy. I use the homework subject to post announcements for my students and parents. Parents have told me it's easy to go through the different subjects to look at what their child has completed. And I love the speed grader. That makes it so much easier. In Schoology, I would have to go into each student when they submitted an assignment, where we bring it up in a window. It's all ready for you in Canvas. So what do I like about Canvas? So far, everything.
Using Canvas as a special education teacher has been so helpful because I'm able to assign my SDI lessons um each week as their math objectives change and their G-Mets change. So when I go in, I can see what the teacher's doing and then take that and apply my SDI methods in addition to seeing as they're working on their work, where the student is at in real time.
At first, I was worried that the transition to a new learning management system would be difficult. My grade level has been able to ask questions and provide feedback to the Department of Teaching and Learning as we've worked through this new learning system. Canvas is very similar to Schoology, but has great features that were lacking in Schoology. Students have quickly discovered features within Canvas that I was not originally familiar with, such as recording a video in a discussion board. The students easily teach each other how to use the tools within Canvas. To be honest, I was overwhelmed with the thought of moving to a new learning management system. However, the transition to Canvas has been seamless and much easier than expected.
Thank you so much for allowing us to share a few observations we have made while palating.
Canvas!
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Delaney to speak about the flexible scheduling updates.
Thank you, Dr. Shubridge. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. Just want to take a few moments to provide an update to the summer retreat presentation that we did on flexible scheduling model for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The impetus for this change can be attributed to the work that we have been engaging around redesigning the high school experience. At the present time, high schools are focused on the four pillars of high school redesign as shown on this slide. They're being challenged to look at innovative solutions with ultimate goal of developing future-ready students. This year, each high school's plan for continuous improvement involves the creation of a future-ready goal, one that ensures that upon graduations our students are ready to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. So school leaders believe that we must look at changing the scheduling model in order to meet these goals. It's important that I continue to provide clarity on what is meant by flexible scheduling. Simply put, we'd like to explore a scheduling model that maximizes the opportunities provided for students and also allows us to maximize how we utilize teachers and staff. As you know, we provided an initial presentation on flexible scheduling in July at the school board retreat. Since that time, the Department of Teaching and Learning identified courses that could be taught both on a four-by-four schedule and an AB schedule, and presented those recommendations to principals at our August league meeting. Beginning in September, a committee of principals, master schedulers, directors, and the school counseling instructional specialists have been working on developing a sample student schedules as well as sample master schedules that could fit a desired model. I'll share a couple of those sample student schedules and teacher schedules later in the presentation. The schedule will include a focus on four-by-four classes with AB courses specific to IB, AP, fine arts, and special educations. Meetings have also been held with the Department of Technology to ensure that a schedule can be effectively developed in synergy. As you see in the green highlighted area on this slide, principals will continue to work with and inform teacher leaders and teachers about the potential scheduling format. School counselors will be meeting with students and families on course selections. Our goal is to bring a recommendation to board for approval in January so that we can communicate the schedule changes to families in order for them to complete course selections in February. Throughout March and June, all courses need to be locked in synergy. By the end of March, the Department of Technology will provide training for master schedulers, and master schedulers will begin finalizing schedules during the months of June and July. So the committee has been working on developing a schedule that will provide increased opportunities for students to take advanced courses, electives, and more work-based learning opportunities. We'd like to maintain a structure that allows teachers to have common planning time, and the schedule must have alignment across the division to mitigate impact on student transfers. So I'd like to take a couple of, take a moment to show you a couple of student examples and teacher examples, and please let me emphasize, these are just examples. Give you a moment to review this slide here of a potential ninth-grade student's schedule. You will see on the left side, that would be the student's schedule in the first semester, and on the right side, that would be the student's schedule in the second semester. In this example, the student is able to receive the necessary support in mathematics on an AB schedule for the entire school year, while also getting the opportunity to complete the sequential elective requirements in the ninth grade via four-by-four course options as noted in block four. Furthermore, this schedule provides the student additional flexibility to engage in more CTE courses and/or explore other areas of interest through electives moving forward to future grades. It is also important to note that the student will take four courses during each term, thus minimizing the course load, but providing the opportunity for the student to finish the school year with seven to eight credits. Give you a moment to take a look at this sample student's schedule of a twelfth-grade student. Again, on the left side would be the sample for the first semester. On the right side would be what the student could take in the second semester. Take note, this is a highly advanced schedule. With this schedule, a senior would be able to engage in advanced placement courses in the AB format as well as the four-by-four schedule. For example, AP English twelve, AP Government, and AP Biology will be taught all year on the AB schedule, while the student would be able to take both AP Calculus AB and BC in the same year on a four-by-four schedule. Taking AP Calculus AB and BC in the same year is currently not an option as our schedule is used. They must take AP Calculus AB during their junior year and BC during their senior year or, or come up with some other modified plan. Other important points to highlight are the student's ability to take additional advanced-level coursework while still participating in advanced band, the ability to complete the world language requirement, as well as an additional year of world language that is taught on the four-by-four schedule. Now, I'd like to show you three potential teacher schedules in this model. In the first example, the teacher is teaching both English twelve and AP English twelve. The teacher has one block of planning each day as noted in the green common planning block. The teacher has two blocks of core English twelve each day for semester one on a four-by-four schedule. A new set of students will fill these classes semester two, as noted on the schedule. The teacher also has an AP class that meets every other day all year on an AB schedule. In the second schedule, in English In the second schedule, an English IX teacher has common planning block each day during Block Three. This teacher has three English IX classes, could be honors as well, four-by-four classes that meet daily. A new set of students would start second semester. In the final example, the social studies teacher has AP Government courses that meet every other day all year on an AB schedule. The teacher has a second block planning each day and has a Government four-by-four classes each semester as indicated on the schedule. All scenarios prevent teachers from exceeding the 150-student each semester. All scenarios allow for students to reset if they have not met success. For example, a student in Government four-by-four Term One that does not meet with success might be able to be placed in a Government four-by-four Semester Two, thus allowing them to stay on schedule for graduation. And when common planning blocks are leveraged with need and balanced among grade-level courses, they can be built in successfully. Want to note there, the reason for just planning on the 12th-grade social studies teachers, common planning may not be possible for all subject areas as we try to ensure that we get them in our most areas of need. We see the potential for this scheduling model to evolve over time as we will continue to review online opportunities through learning management systems like Canvas, or review division processes, policies, and regulations and bring revisions as necessary. We're working on, we're really entering the initial phases of this work. We do kind of look at this as a five-year plan to see what other things can be done to essentially increase work-based learning opportunities for students. We'll continually review and help us meet the ever-evolving needs of our student, staff, community, and Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We really look forward to return to the board in January with the recommendation. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you. Actually, I have one question for each of you and one comment. I like the idea that some are the four-by-four and some are block, the hybrid. That's good because some classes are better one, some the other. Actually, on one, what is the difference in planning and common planning?
Common planning would be, if you look at that English IX example, all English IX teachers are off at that time and can work together to plan, and in many cases, a literacy coach will be involved in that. Well, you would see that a lot in English is English 11, which is where you have the writing SOL, reading SOL, and it's a verified credit. So you would essentially always try to pair that group up, but there's other areas where you might say we're not able to do it because of need. But that's the common planning.
All right. And then I had a question about Canvas. It looks like there's a lot of enthusiasm for it, and it sounds like by students and teachers, and that's good. The only question that I would have is, is this a switch to where Canvas streamlines things and replaces other things for teachers, or is it in addition to other duties that they have?
It would streamline. So some of the feedback that we're getting is how we can help streamline the work that teachers are doing. So in the pilot schools, when they say, "We loaded something a certain way, and they said it was too much for us, and so we went back to the drawing board and we have cleaned it up for them." We've already shared out what quarter two was going to look like. We've already gotten positive feedback from a couple of teachers about, "Thank you so much for listening. This is going to help us out." So we are taking all of their feedback. We feel like this is our opportunity to really streamline things for teachers, to make it easier to find the things that they're looking for, to put it out there for students.
And it'll help remove some of that kind of duplicative.
That's our, that's our goal.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin, and then Mrs. Manning.
I actually have just a quick question about Canvas as well. So I wanted to, if you could just remind me, is the cost, because I love the fact that we don't have that cost for the next five years, but is the cost very similar to Schoology? I remember that we.
The cost of Canvas? I would have to get that. We actually did a cost, we did a spreadsheet of like what the cost would be if we had to pay for it, and I would have to find that for you. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. I think, I think it was very similar, though. And then I also just wanted to thank you, Mr. Delaney, because we had our student rep in the CAC meeting last year, and she expressed that she really did enjoy, she was an honor student, but she really did enjoy some aspects of the four-by-four. So I love this and that, that we're listening to students and teachers and combining this. So I just appreciate all the good work that you did for this.
Thank you. Essentially, you said that we had a student the other day who's at the Renaissance Academy taking four-by-four classes, had decided to stay there, that was, had some heartburn that she couldn't be back at her home school because the course offerings weren't there. So this is another layer for those students to say, hey, we can easily transition you back and keep you on your graduation schedule is really one of the goals.
I know this took a lot of work, and I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Manning?
Oh, so, well, thank you so much for the teacher feedback. I know I had made that request, so I really appreciate that. And I think I heard you say that it's going to be optional for teachers this year to switch to Canvas. Is that what I heard you say?
So when we started the year, we had commitments from the seven schools to participate in the pilot. With all of the requests that we've had and based on the superintendent's recommendation last week, Dr. Saltoner and I met with the four secondary schools because they were not yet fully in to say to them, if you have teachers that just don't want to, Dr. Saltoner said it beautifully, get on the train right now, the station, you'll come back around again in September. So we allowed for teachers who were, agreed to be part of the pilot, who wanted to slow down, to stay in Schoology, and they don't have to. On the flip side, we've had other high schools that have started training, and they've asked to be in Canvas for the second semester. So we're kind of, we're being open to where, what people are comfortable with and what they're trying to.
Okay, thank you. Because I think that's really important right now with our shortages that we, you know.
Exactly. Well, and that was, that was.
Just change right now. Any change, even if it's good change, could be stressful.
Right. And that was the purpose of our meeting. And to say that we totally understood and supported if teachers said they just wanted to wait, we had enough teachers that were doing it to get feedback.
Perfect. And then I'm so pleased with what I see on the flexible scheduling model. I also think that this is going to be a huge benefit for our military population who are coming from different types of structures and different schools. So thanks for all the work that has gone into this. I'm very, very pleased with what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
So first of all, the flexible scheduling, I noticed that you had indicated banned as part of it, because that was one of the complaints that I had heard with the four-by-four, was that it wasn't real conducive for students who were in band last year.
Yeah, it could be a struggle with students in band. I mean, there's ways you can work through doubling up some of those classes and giving two credits. We weren't ready to go there yet, so looking at it from this perspective.
So this flexible one, though, it looks like you've incorporated that in there.
Yes.
And also, like, for example, I'm assuming that the schedule, let's say, where you have, well, this is just one student, where the first semester, they would be taking World History and Geography, and second semester, English. So could, would that be flipped for another student?
Typically, yes. They try to, the master schedulers are going to really look to pair up the schedules to ensure that it stays balanced.
Okay. And also, for the Canvas plan, is that conducive for primary grades as well?
What do you mean by conducive?
Well, I mean, like, okay, like the kindergarten for a second grade, where are they able to participate with Canvas as well and just, just as they have been in the past?
They are. Actually, Canvas has a primary grade template, and so the look and feel of Canvas for primary is more geared towards our younger users. In addition, we're still leveraging Seesaw, and so for our primary teachers, they still have Seesaw as a tool and a mechanism to communicate out information.
That's what I really wanted to know, is can they still use Seesaw?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, so far, I think all this looks good to me. Thank you.
And this is for Mr. Delaney, that the sample schedules do acknowledge what's been acknowledged previously about the AP courses, to have them year-long.
Correct. There's some that we feel like you can teach on a four-by-four. There are some that you can. Most of those, when you look at that senior schedule, is the one of note. A biology and English 12 and AP Government typically aren't as conducive. As a former AP psychology teacher, I believe you could probably teach that one on a four-by-four schedule and still feel like kids could be prepared for the test in March, or April, I'm sorry, May. Majority of those are going to be on an AB format, excuse me, as well as the IB courses, and we'll work with the academies to see what best meets their needs as well.
So, and that does lead me to, can we presume that, to assure the IB parents listening to this, because that was another major constituency, that they would follow the pattern of most of these AP courses?
We'll work directly with Prince Anne High School, Green Run Collegiate. That is a legitimate concern around those IB assessments that we're going to make sure is addressed.
Okay. Are we, anybody else? Thank you much.
Thank you.
And now we welcome Mr. Jack Freeman, our Operations Officer, for discussion on facility use application.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. The purpose of this presentation is to share a new process for groups wishing to gather on the grounds of non-school buildings and facilities. These procedures facilitate gaining permission and designating a location to safely gather. We've had a similar process in place in all school buildings for years to provide access to Virginia Beach City Public Schools' facilities and grounds for our community and to ensure our facilities are kept in good condition. As part of the review process of policies by the Policy Review Committee, changes were recently made and approved by the School Board. They include revisions to Bylaw 1-48 and Policy 7-16. I will give you a moment to review. These changes were implemented to establish clear guidelines and procedures for groups who wish to gather at any of our non-school buildings, similar to what we've had in place for our school buildings for years. The changes enable groups to safely gather and, among other reasons, exercise their First Amendment rights. The existing application for use of school facility was modified to accommodate all Virginia Beach City Public Schools' facilities and is now entitled Application for Use of Facility. Revisions include the addition of language related to the Virginia Human Rights Act Code of Virginia, changing the name of the school to the name of the facility, and changing the approver from principal to building supervisor. The approval path is the same, which includes final approval from the Office of Risk Management School Rentals. All forms, procedures, contacts, and applicable school board policy and regulations will be posted on vb schools dot com under the Community tab, Facilities Use Application slash School Rentals. To support the new procedures, school administration will work with our attorney to revise Regulation 7-53.1 by adding a new Section B specifically dealing with applications for administrative buildings. The addition of Section B includes three parts: groups of 20 or less persons, groups of 21 or greater persons, and general rules for facilities at administrative buildings or grounds. We'll now share the details of each. 20 was selected as the most reasonable number to determine whether a facility use form would be needed. For groups of 20 or less, no application form will be required if: A) The assembly will be during business hours on days when the school division is open. Business hours are defined as the time the building is open for business. In most buildings, this runs from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. However, on nights of school board meetings, the school administration building is open until the school board meeting concludes. B) The assembly will not involve selling of items or services, including food or beverages. C) The assembly will not involve the use of noise-amplifying devices that may disrupt the business activities of the administrative, of the administrative building. C is in place as the building will be open for operations. This includes employees who are working, also those who need to enter and exit the building as part of their workday. For school administration building, it's worth noting that human resources regularly receives visits from those seeking employment, those needing access badges, and other HR services that support current and prospective employees. D) The person seeking to assemble must contact the building supervisor no later than two days in advance of the event to discuss the appropriate location to gather and any applicable safety or health conditions related to the facility. For D, the purposes of this contact is to: 1) Allow the building supervisor to speak or meet with the group contact; 2) Specify a location for the group to gather in an area that does not interfere with the operations of the building or grounds; and 3) To answer any questions the group leader may have, for example, access to restrooms or parking for attendees. For groups of 21 or more, the following conditions apply: A) A facility use form must be submitted 10 days in advance of the requested date. For A, the facility use form must be submitted to the attention of the building supervisor and can be dropped off at the front desk at least 10 business days in advance. B) The building supervisor will respond to the facility use form request no later than two business days prior to the requested date. For B, the response will be via electronic communication or phone call to the requester. C) The response on the facility use form will include approval or denial, and the reason for denial if appropriate, or will propose alternative locations or conditions for the use of the facility. For C, the response will include the approval and likely be followed by a discussion on location determination, group needs, and Q and A between the building supervisor and the group leader. D) All applicable conditions, fees, and rules facility use requests will apply and must be complied with. For D, if any fees, conditions, or rules are applicable, this will be made clear in the response by the building supervisor and subsequent discussion between the building supervisor and the group leader. In general, fees are only assessed for things like custodial support. E) Groups of 21 or more persons that do not have approved facility use forms may not use facilities and will be required to leave the facilities or grounds. For E, in this case, staff will direct the group to leave the facility or grounds or to relocate to an exterior sidewalk or adjacent public space. Here are the general rules for use of facilities at administrative buildings or grounds. Internal, A, internal sidewalks, walkways, or pathways used to access facilities may not be blocked in any manner by groups or persons. This is the same expectation that has always existed at our school buildings. B, sidewalks or pathways that border public streets are open for expressive activities that are otherwise compliant with applicable law or ordinance. C, parking lots and areas reserved for use by staff, students, or persons having business inside the administrative building or grounds are not available for persons or groups to assemble to conduct activities. Groups may request special consideration for the use of these areas. When doing so, will not interfere with the business of the school division and persons entering or exiting such facilities. And a couple of slides will show a map of the school administration building to help make that part a little bit more clear. Moving from C to D under general rules, building administrators will designate areas of facilities that will be available for use by approved persons or groups. Considerations will be given to the conditions of the grounds, proximity to the facilities that may create safety or health concerns, facility equipment or systems, and use of facilities for school division activities or other approved groups, and other considerations. Groups or persons approved to use facilities must comply with all applicable rules for facility use, including, but not limited to, applicable health and safety protocols, removal of trash or debris, restriction on alcohol, tobacco, drugs, or similar items, and other applicable school board bylaws, policies, or regulations. This is what the new facility use form looks like. Again, it was slightly modified from the form that was previously used for schools, but now accounts for all Virginia Beach City Public Schools' buildings and grounds. And I know this may be a little bit challenging to read on the screen. It includes basic information about the request, including the group requesting the use, which facility and spaces are requested, equipment requests, dates, and the number of people expected to attend. The building supervisor has an area to indicate approval or disapproval, whether custodial overtime is needed, and an area for specific instructions. Of note, it is possible to request multiple dates or a series of dates on one form. The final approval continues to be from the Office of Risk Management slash School Rentals. That part of the approval also accounts for any potential fees. Remember that this form is used for a wide variety of uses in our facilities, including athletics, religious organizations which use our indoor spaces, and gatherings that are outdoors. The first two examples would likely involve fees. The latter would not. Big picture here, thought it would be helpful for you to see the form to understand the minor updates. All administrative buildings will have an assigned building supervisor in place who will be trained on how to follow this procedure. Those buildings include transportation services, facility services and maintenance services, custodial and distribution services. custodial and distribution services, Building 16, Plaza Annex, including the Family and Community Engagement Center, and the school administration building. Note that the school administration building supervisor is the chief of staff. Pictures always help. This is a satellite view of the school administration building. Building is at the top center. The main parking lot is at the bottom half of the screen. As noted in Regulation 7-53.1, sidewalks or pathways that border public streets are open for expressive activities that are otherwise compliant with applicable law or ordinance. For the SAB, those sidewalks are where you see the yellow lines. Available areas for gathering are the two roughly square-shaped areas in the middle of the parking lot, the two roughly square-shaped areas on either side of the building in the grassy area, and the rectangular-shaped area at the bottom of the screen. One of the benefits of the approach that is easier to see now that we're all looking at a map is the ability to accommodate distinct groups. Multiple groups could request and reserve their area and gather rather than groups trying to compete for the same space at the same time. Moving forward, we will post the Facility Use Application Procedure on vb schools dot com under the Community tab, Facilities Use Application slash School Rentals on or before this Friday, November 12th. This new process becomes effective on that day. Recognizing the 10-business-day minimum for submission of forms, we look to Wednesday, December 1st, as the first day by which any group wishing to gather in administrative buildings or on grounds must have completed the Facility Use Application Procedure. That concludes the brief. We will now take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We'll start with Mrs. Anderson.
What happens if a Facility Use Form is filled out and they indicated that they will have less than 20 people, but significantly more people show up?
So, in the case of less than 20, the Facility Use Form isn't required. It's just that's a case where you contact.
And who's going to enforce this? That, let's say, 50 or 60 show up. They've indicated that they are only going to have 20.
So, that appears to be falling the legal category of what do you do if the number exceeds where we are?
Right. Who's going to enforce this?
So, I can handle the... So, enforceability, because that's all the... So, as we described, that's always the question, is enforceability. As I described, staff would approach if there were noncompliance with what policies and regulations say. The group would be approached and asked to leave. If they didn't, we would contact the police department, and the police department would take it from there.
Okay.
Kami Lynetti, School Board Legal Counsel. Just clarification. You have exclusive control over this building, the grounds, and the reserved parking areas that you've got in this one. So, you would make the decisions as a school board whether somebody's complying with your rules or not. And eventually, if you need to have them move off or not, if they're not complying, you can call the police department at that point to require them to leave. The municipal parking lot is something we're still working through, some of those areas and that, but at some point, if they are causing disturbance, blocking the business on there. Right now, the city's administrative directive does not allow any form of expressive activities in any of the municipal parking lots. So, at that point, you would then call the police department to come in and enforce those particular rules.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens and Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. I just had a question as far as the timeframe to turn in the application. Is that timeframe the same that it has always been with facility use forms, or has that changed?
The 10-business days?
The 10-business days.
I'm unaware that that was a change.
So, that's what it's always been?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Manning?
Okay, so I am fine with all of this, except when our public meetings are taking place. And I'm not directing this at you. I know that staff has been directed to do this. We have public who gathers in our parking lot because they can't get into our meetings. And the chair decided that we were going to open up our meetings more today and make three-feet distance or every other chair, whatever. But we now have staff taking up half of the room. So, we still only have the same amount of seats for the public. I mean, maybe, maybe we can get eight, nine people in here right now. So, we have people gathering in the parking lot because we are not allowing them access to our meetings, which by law we have to do. There was just a judgment in Suffolk where the judge says that you have to allow access, and we are not. And now, we're going to not allow access without a permit in our parking lot? I certainly hope someone challenges this in court because I believe it's a First Amendment violation. So, my first question is, what is the definition of a group?
So, let me go back and say that we have 30 seats in here now that are open to staff or to attendees.
Thirty, so we're... So, 30 citizens can come and sit?
Thirty can sit.
Thirty that...
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll be looking for 30 people in here.
Plus, we've got a couple of seats for those who are unmasked, because we do have some attendees who come unmasked. To your question of what constitute a group, we established 20 as a threshold in terms of whether or not we needed an application. It's not unusual for a couple of families to have a conversation, "Hey, you going to the school board meeting tonight?" Yes, because such and such is being recognized. Well, you know, that's a... That's 10, that's 12. We determined 20 would be the appropriate number to determine, to initiate the application process. Ms. Anderson asked, "What about if you go out there and there's 25 people gathered and they haven't done anything?" I think people need to assume good intentions here. The fact of the matter is, we tried to create this to ensure that we do not have competing groups that come to a school board meeting and try to secure the same location. We have all and can all go online and find numerous examples that have occurred over the last year where competing groups have shown up on the same site, where one group has done what they were supposed to do and followed the right process, and a second group came up to confront the first group. We do not want to have anything like that happen. So, we've established this opportunity for people to declare their coming. We have a process that will allow them to come, to gather safely, to ensure that if a second group tries to come, we can separate those individuals. The conversation between the building supervisor and the group leader is a great opportunity to initiate dialogue, something that you have asked for multiple times. You said, "You just need to talk to these people." This is a great opportunity for us to talk to these people, to accommodate their needs so that they can gather safely, they can exercise their First Amendment rights, and still come in. I think we all need to remember, we are not preventing parents from coming into this meeting. We are abiding by CDC recommendations based upon social distancing. Dr. Welch is here tonight. It is Dr. Welch's guidance. When we press based upon school board requests, now that we're in substantial, can we go away from the six-feet distancing? She said, "Yes." We decided to go every other seat. It is our goal, it is our hope, that we do not have to continue to wear these masks and that everyone can sit. But until then, we have to be patient, and we need your support.
Well, I disagree because ever at city council, they can fill every single seat without masks, and it's not a problem. They don't restrict the public. They don't require... I was at an event at city council a couple of years ago where they had 1,000 people out there, and they didn't have to get a permit. So, I... I mean, this all came about. We know how this all came about. We know why this is all being done. And again, I'm not blaming staff. This was a board decision. And I still think if we've got 50 parents who show up out there, they're not a part of a group, and they show up out there and they can't get in the building, it is going to be a huge issue if you call the police and escort them off this property. So, this...
Mrs. Manning, I would like to clarify. I feel like you're mixing apples and oranges, and they're two different concepts here. The Freedom of Information Act allows for public meetings access to observe, to come in and observe. That is not a First Amendment. That's not an expression issue. That's just your ability to observe what's going on with the government meeting that's subject to the foyer. And again, we're currently under restrictions, and the restrictions in the school division would be different from the city council because the schools are under different mandates.
Our school administration building is not. Schools are.
Correct. And the decision the school board made was that because individuals in this building often go out into the schools, we're trying to protect the students who are currently under the masking requirements. You're a little different from city council, what they're doing. So, that's a different issue. But again, access to a meeting is not a First Amendment issue. It is an access under the Freedom of Information Act that allows you to come in and observe. And you do broadcast this in multiple forms. You have individuals in here. So, the fact that you're gathering in the parking lot because you can't come in is not a First Amendment issue. What your policies were dealing with were expressive activities, that which you're concerned at your September 1st meeting. How do we control the meetings and make sure people are safe and so that we have orderly meetings? So, the policies were designed for expressive activities. So, what was controlling in the parking lot in the property is how we're going to control expressive activities. So, if you just have a group of parents out there that might be there because their students are getting award for a sports event, they're probably not conducting expressive activities that we're concerned about. It's when you're standing there in an organized group to communicate some kind of issue that may then become blocking areas, holding up signs. Those were what you were concerned about, and that's what these regulations are designed to do, is allowing those individuals to have those opportunities for expressive activities, but to do it safely in a manner so you don't have to worry about... And again, so you don't have to deal with some of the business aspects of groups fighting. It's also a lot of liability issues, as I've mentioned before. I've had an ongoing concern about us not making sure we have rules there and what you say to your insurance carrier when you have an issue and you did not have rules in place, when you knew that you had activities like this going on. You needed some rules in place, and that's what this is doing. The expressive activities is what you were controlling, and the people gathering waiting to come in, like I said, parents might be sitting out there waiting for the kids to come in. That may not be an issue for us because they may not be conducting expressive activities. So, be careful what you're mixing up here. First Amendment, expressive activities is what you're trying to make sure were protected. People coming into a meeting is a different aspect.
Mrs. Milne, then Mrs. Hughes.
I would also like to add that our staff are not being strategically placed in here to take the seats from people who want to come. Our staff have always attended these meetings from start to finish forever. Dr. Saltner, Dr. Smith, Dr. Rogers, they're expected to be here. They're expected to be part of this. This is what they know they do every other Tuesday. These are not strategically placed staff members in this building, and quite frankly, it's usually more. But it is nice to see you guys in here again. Makes me happy, because I will note that so members of the public could come before or to open up a few seats for the public. They remained in their offices and watched via Zoom. And so, but now that we're opening it back up, I'm glad to see you all in here again.
Mrs. Hughes.
There is no reason to have this seating this limited. There just isn't. And I don't remember taking a board vote on it. It seemed to have been a unilateral decision. However, I wouldn't have voted on this. Anyone here who's elected, you're not a leader. You are a public servant. You work for the public. The public has the right to be in public buildings. This is... I can't even believe anybody thinks that the public is buying this. This is keeping them out of the building, keeping them from gathering out front because they're saying things you don't want to hear. If they were out there cheering for the majority, you would never be passing these rules. You just wouldn't be, and no one is fooled by this.
So, I would like to respond and just respectfully remind everyone that at the last meeting during administrative matters, I brought up the subject, and I sought a broad board consensus that we ease up the social distancing guidelines to three feet, which would amount to every other seat, and that there was... And we moved on from there.
So, out of the 98 seats, how many are open to the public? Don't count the ones you're saving for the VBEA president or the press. How many are open for the public?
I was merely offering a reminder that this was posed to the full board two weeks ago.
Well, the initial shutting it down and just having six open seats, I don't remember discussing that. But still, how many seats in this building are open to the public right now?
I believe that was answered by our chief of staff.
Thirty? Thirty, and none of those are reserved for the press or VBEA president? Thirty for anybody who walks in the door?
Mrs. Wiems, then Ms. Owens.
Well, I certainly did not support this when we voted for it a couple of weeks ago. But yeah, I think when we say expressive activities are what we're concerned about, we're not concerned about with parents who congregate to root on their children if they've gotten, you know, awards. So, you're already kind of making a determination of who we're concerned about, which is a little problematic to me. So, in this little diagram that you have the red boxes in, so I'm a group, I guess, and I call and reserve a place, and then you're going to tell me which side of the building that we're allowed in or at the very end of the parking lot because of the size of my group? That's my one question. Is that how it works?
So, I'll answer it for this building. So, I would talk to the individual and based upon the number of people attending, give them an option of where they want to gather. If it is a single group coming, those are the five options of where they want to gather. They would have that choice. First come, first served. And because we have had a group that continues to come, they could fill out the facility use form one time and list multiple dates and secure their spot multiple dates. And if their group grew beyond a area they chose, that's just a conversation with that individual to say, "Okay, your group is growing beyond this area. Which area do you now want to go to?" So that we can plan for that.
Okay. That was my next question. Can I, as this, I guess, self-appointed group leader, can I say I want these dates for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. I do like that. I do appreciate that. Okay, so if we're just... Okay, like, just take this list and say that there... I don't know if these people are affiliated with any group, but say there's 100 people speaking or 200 people speaking one night, and they come, and it's nice weather, and they just hang out, but nobody's formed anything. What are you going to do then? Is that when you, like, just go out there and make sure everything's okay?
Yeah, I think we're assuming some bad intentions here. I think we're assuming that we have created some policies here that are going to allow us to go out there and tell people to go home.
Okay.
And that is not what we've done. What we have done is protected ourselves by creating a process that if we have competing groups that come out, which have happened across this country...
But I'm not talking about groups. I understand what you said. I'm talking about just individuals, speakers that come that aren't affiliated with any group, that we're having three recognitions that night for sports, plus we have a hot topic. They're just coming.
All good.
They're... Okay, so nobody's reserved anything? And there's no... Because they're not officially within a group. These are official groups that are here.
Official groups.
Okay, to do expressive activities.
Yes.
That we're concerned about. Okay.
Right. So, Mrs. Wiems, like an example, if you're posting on Facebook and you're saying, "We're going to have a rally at 5:00 p.m. in front of the school administration building," that is an organized rally. That's not showing up to speak. That's an organized rally. The person posting that and saying, "Show up at this rally," needs to call the school administration building if they anticipate that there will be more than 20 people at that rally. So that we can organize that and provide that... Provide that opportunity to pick the space that they would be in. That is not the same thing as I've shown up as a parent, I've signed up to speak, or I showed up as a community member, I've signed up to speak. That's not an organized group. That's not... Those are speakers here.
Because that could be problematic.
And I think Ms. Lynetti made that distinction as well.
Okay. Okay. Because that... Yeah. Okay, those are the only questions. Like, again, I don't support this, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Ms. Owens. And just a time check, 5:35, and we will obviously be continuing our workshop with the last item.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate the adjustments so that as a board, we're able to accommodate and be ready for whatever accommodations we may need to have for speakers and people who are coming. I'm not as comfortable with the 10-day, 10-business-day advanced notice that the form has to be in on. I think that that's appropriate for using our facilities for whatever, the religious activities and sports and AAU things. But I do think that we have to have a little more leeway when we're talking about expressive But I do think that we have to have a little more leeway when we're talking about expressive activities, to allow expressive activities to be somewhat reactionary to things that are going on. If we say 10 days to get the application in, they don't get to... The public doesn't get to react to what's on our agenda, because the agenda doesn't come out until after their form had to be in. And while I understand that a lot of the gathering is to come out and say that they're not happy about the things I'm saying, I still think that people have a right to be reactionary and come and say whatever they would like to say about it. There does need to be a timeframe so that as a district, we're able to anticipate and make sure that we have places for different groups that may want to come. And I don't know what the magic number should be, whether that can be handled in four days or three days or five days. But I do think we should look at that timeframe. When it comes to expressive activities, I think it's appropriate... I've used this form for... Or referred it out to the youth coach or whoever for my own child's activities, but that wasn't an expressive activity. And so, I do think we should look at shortening that time, although I still like the idea of the application, and I do think that it allows for different organizations to come and have those expressive activities. It allows for more of that rather than less of it, because different groups can feel comfortable coming and knowing where they're going to be and what the expectations are. And so, that's just my two cents on it.
So, if I may offer a suggestion, yes, that we will continue the workshop, we'll make a motion with... It'll be Item 17 at the end of the formal meeting. And we have our COVID health and safety mitigations, and we can also... There'll be more time in between that we can continue with any remaining questions or comments concerning this subject. So, if that's acceptable, everybody. So, we'll, for now, conclude our workshop to be taken up again later, and we'll meet again here at 6 o'clock for the formal meeting. Thank you.